Regular meeting of the Alexander Board of Education, I'd like to call the meeting to order and have roll call please.
Jay.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Steven.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Member one would please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could have a motion to adopt the agenda, please, with the addendum that we had earlier this evening?
So moved.
Aaron.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Jay.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Steven.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to go right to a little special presentation by Anna and Lisa. If they would come up to the microphone and give us an update on the playground, please.
Okay.
Hello, good evening, everybody.
Good evening, we just wanted to send, give you guys a quick update on the playground project. Oh, and, um, yes, so this, I'm Anna Corpy and-
And I'm Lisa Weigle. It's gonna take us a while to get through this.
So no, we, we just, we weren't unable to come in February because we were both sick, like everyone in Athens County was sick. So finally, we're better now, but we felt it important to just give the, not only you as board members, because most of you are pretty aware of where everything is at, since we have regular communication, but the wider community may not, and you know, wider community comes to these meetings or watches these meetings. So we thought, let's make sure everyone knows where we are. And so the, just as a reminder, you know, when Lisa and I started this project, we wanted playground equipment that was accessible out at the school. But this has become kind of a larger mission for us and for the committee, which is not only having a playground for everybody, but it was a really great opportunity, since we are on a campus and an educational institution, to make it an educational opportunity. And so we have done that and we are continuing to do that. And then we've already been contacted by other communities about how to build a playground. So we're hoping that some of what's worked here at the school district can work for others. So wanting this to be replicable. And so as a reminder, we, our process was to kind of figure out the need, do a lot of research, make a plan, and raise the funds, and build.
So just like Anna was saying, this is really just, part of this is a reminder, and then the rest of it is what is happening and what's going to happen. And so starting this project, Anna and I sat down and we just wanted to figure out, who is this playground going to be for? So I'm looking at this playground through the eyes of my own child. And then I met Anna, who also has a child with disabilities. So I'm looking at the playground, we're actually looking at the playground together through the eyes of our children. And then we expanded and started talking to other parents in the district. And we're realizing there's more than just mobility needs. There's hearing loss, there's autism spectrum disorder, there's ADHD, there's need for quiet spaces, it's very vast. And so, but also, one of the most important things that we want to relay is that this is also for children without any diagnoses at all. And also the adults that accompany the children on the playground. So this isn't just a wheelchair playground, this is a playground for everybody, everybody to play together. And just reminding the areas that we have been working on and are going to be working on, this is areas one, two, and three that are highlighted in, on the, on the slide.
And this is an aerial view from Google Maps, just because it's a big campus. We wanted to make sure everyone understood what those areas were as we talk about it.
So we initially sat down and broke this into four phases, the phases of fundraising. And we named those phases play. So P is the play structure with the ramps, and that's area one. That area has been completed, and that was built last summer, summer of 2024. Phase L is going to be more large standing pieces, and it's also going to include shade structures as well. This is going to be area two, and that's going to be built in the summer of 2025. So as soon as the students leave, we're going to start excavating and getting this underway. All of, all of the items have been ordered and we're excited to get this done. We also have the accessible surfacing, which actually the accessible surfacing is part of PL and Y, because they all go together. Y will have accessible surfacing as well. We currently have not raised enough money for Y, but I think it's pretty good that we've accomplished two playgrounds so far in two years. So we're pretty excited about that. And this is just a reminder of what we had before, this is-
An area one.
And this is area one, and this is where we started. Again, this is another picture, part of area one. If you look in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see a curb there. There's no way for any mobility devices to access up that curb. And then of course, there's the mulch. So this is after we did all of the, everything was complete, we cut that curb out. And so now it's all flat. Anybody with a mobility device can just walk straight through, or you know, use their wheelchair straight through and-
And that's the accessible surfacing. We just wanted to show you sort of a before and after, because some people still don't understand, what does it mean to be inclusive? What does it mean to be accessible? And we just wanted to remind our community what that, what that looks like.
And so the picture before was this, I'm sorry, was the slide. So now we've replaced it with ramps. And this is, if this isn't a picture of inclusion, I don't know what is. This is where children can be together, they can follow each other onto the equipment. This is also, I spoke before about the need for quiet time also. Sometimes children need a break from recess, as crazy as that sounds. There's a lot of children with a lot of needs and, you know, coming from a quiet building to a loud, large playground. Sometimes kids need time to adapt, and we put the quiet code in for that, to serve that purpose. And I think it serves that purpose well. This was something that was highly requested. These are monkey bars, again, this is parallel play, this is inclusion. Two children can use the monkey bars at the same time. One is lower and the other is higher.
And that way, a wheelchair user can reach up and actually access it. A lot of kids who don't feel confident going high, who don't have disabilities, love the low one to sort of perfect it before they go high. So there's lots of benefits from that dual, dual height.
And this is the Gaga pit. The Gaga pit was, current, before was on a slant. At the beginning of the, once you entered the playground, you see Gaga pit. And it was on a slant, so we moved it to a more stable surface on the blacktop. We've also put the accessible door there, so anybody with a mobility device can open that door and join in. On the Gaga fun, what's not pictured are the mats. So we did order the Gaga pit mats to go with this, just for extra safety. So there are mats out there as well.
And then lastly, the other photo we wanted to show you was of the chinning bars, which the teacher said, don't get rid of those, that people love doing gymnastics. But we made a small little change with the little therapeutic rings at the bottom. If you think about how you can like grab up on bars, what would be easier for, you know, for some people's muscles in terms of grabbing this way or grabbing like this? So people with a little bit less strength have an easier time with the rings. Also, they are accessible to a wheelchair user, so someone can kind of, and it's not being able necessarily to do the flips that your friends are doing, but just being able to be in the space where your friends are and being able to touch the equipment and engage the equipment. So small embellishments like that actually could have been done years before. But those are just, like, it's a small way to make something a little bit more accessible to the children.
And cheaper too, as well.
And cheaper, cheaper too. So this is area two, which is coming this summer. This is fully funded, thank you to former Representative Jay Edwards, and the, in terms of helping us get into the capital budget in the summer. Two-thirds of that cost is paid for by that, the other third is paid for by private fundraising. So we have raised all those funds and the equipment's been ordered. And so that's coming this summer, we are installing it professionally, not doing a community build, just because it's a little bit more complicated and that was recommended, not only by the vendor, but the community. This is not, this is, actually has changed a lot, but we just wanted to show that we are currently working on the preschool playground to create some ground level things, some more supportive things. This has actually changed, but I wanted to give you an idea of sort of some of, some of the, some of the ideas that are out there. So we are still not even halfway to our goal for area three. And there's a number that's vacillating, because we don't know economically what things will look like at the end of this year, or even next year, when we need to order. So things might go up significantly in price, and it's something we're concerned about. So we are trying to raise the money as best we can by fall, maybe even order it before prices go up and store it if we have to. But definitely, that still need another 125,000 to get that front playground done. And so finally, in our last section of our presentation, we just wanted to tell everyone of, you know, how grateful we are to everyone who's been involved. And we definitely didn't go into this blind, we reached out to a lot of people at a national level. The Souders Playground in Columbus, a mom did something similar that we've done, and just really drew on the expertise of others. We also drew on the expertise of the kids, we asked people with disabilities what they want. And I, we showed you this, I think, last year, but wanted to remind you that it was really important to get stakeholder feedback. I talked to a superintendent in a different district who built a playground, I said, how'd you do it? And he said, oh, well, we got together with some teachers and a couple of parents sat in a room, the vendor gave us a design, and we voted yes and built it. And I thought, wow, that sounds really simple. Did you ask anyone with disabilities about their input? Did you ask the children for their input? And they didn't, and you know, I've been to that playground. And so it would be easier to kind of ignore all the outside stakeholders and just decide ourselves. But we felt it was really important for there to be community ownership and buy-in. And so that's why we did what we did. And it sometimes took things a little longer, but we feel that we've gotten a good result from that.
We accomplished it right, we did it the right way.
Yeah, because I think it matters. And we even surveyed the kids. The top one is, what do you want? And then we asked them, what do you think people with disabilities would want? Because we wanted to sort of cultivate this idea of thinking about what others might need, not just what you want. And that was really interesting to see some of the difference in their opinions about that. And just having them be more mindful of their peers and all the varying abilities in their peers. We also surveyed the teachers, asked for their feedback, because the last thing we want to do is build a playground that the teachers hate. So definitely gone above and beyond to do that. And then the kids, you know, they, we got, they got to vote on the color scheme for the playground that's out back. And then they also voted on the sculpture that was donated by someone, by, actually someone who works for a playground company, and his wife is an alumna of the school district. And they donated a play sculpture, so the kids got to vote. Does anyone know what they voted for? Did you see from the pictures? The, which one? Well, the young kids loved that one, but it was actually the rock. The rock, the rock and the iguana took the cake, so it was kind of a landslide. So that's, that was our way of involving the kids. And then these are just some takeaways from the fundraising we've done. We wanted to just share where some of the money has come from in terms of categories. So technically, with in-kind, we've raised over 900,000. If you take some of the in-kind out, not as much as that. But I think it just kind of shows the breadth of the campaign. And yeah, we've had people from 20 different states donate, whether it's relatives or friends of people in our community, and have written a lot of grants. So hoping that we still can get some of those for the third area. And so last but not least, we just wanted to end on our, we made a little summation kind of video that shows the community build, and, and that's the end of our update. Right? Thank you. Yeah.
And so the goal of showing this video was just to say thank you to the community. And it shows, I think it really does show how people came together for this. And I feel as a district, we should feel very proud and feel very honored by all the contributions, both monetary time and also our school district and our school board. I've talked to several parents and community members who have tried these projects and they've been at odds with the superintendent or they've been at odds with the park and recs director. And, and had to, you know, it's like sort of difficult relationships to get these things done, but I feel like we really feel that we've been supported by all of you and you've given us a lot of trust and agency to get this project done. And I don't think a lot of school districts would have done that actually for parents. And I, so I think that's a testament to, I don't know, the kind of faith and closeness that our community has. And just the value of coming together for a joint project, I think is really important in today's world, you know, where we're sort of, we have sort of these isolated silos in our digital spheres. And I think when you come out and you're with people in your community, like we all really want the same things for each other. And I think this project has taught Lisa and me that, you know, whether you have a disabled child or not. So we just wanted to say thank you midway, even though I know we still have work to do.
We still have work to do, but we're extremely grateful, just like Nana said. You guys have been great to work with and thank you for giving us the keys to do this. And we are very grateful to the community.
Even though he didn't give us keys to the school when we asked.
I know, we did ask, though. That's a true story.
That's it, thanks guys.
Maybe next year. Thank you so much.
Well, I'll start by saying while I thank you for thanking us, but I would say the thanks goes to the two of you for spearheading this. Yeah, our support, I'm going to say might, while it might be valuable to you, it's really minimal effort on our part. So it's, it's, I can't, I'm not going to speak for everybody here, but I'm going to say, other than saying good job and carry on, you guys did the lion's share of the work. And I, I think this is important to say is the school didn't pay for any of this. You through grants, through private fundraising, through community, I mean, less than six months ago, you walked anywhere in Athens and there was a bucket out for people to donate change. I know Hawkins Valley Bank did a lot of, of that as well. And just, I mean, it just goes to show, I mean, the community can come together for a valuable project. So on behalf of the board, I'll say thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're good with Dave? Okay. Okay, moving on to item three, public hearing. The board will hear any public comments related to the reemployment of retiree Dave McLaughlin to the same position of teacher. Hearing no comments, we can move on. Okay. Okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hampton for our superintendent's report.
All right. First off, there have been a number of policies that have been given to you guys and a lot of this is through House Bill eight, which has been called the Parents' Bill of Rights. I think obviously anyone paying attention to politics right now, there's a lot happening and a lot of things in motion at one time. So I think this is going to continue. We have a number of policies, but nothing that I think is overwhelming if you really take time to look through and understand it. A couple of changes are, that are new to us, but some other things are really just required changes in that changes in language and those sorts of things. First off, there are a couple of options that we have in our policies that have been adopt, that we have for adoption. One of them was to whether we want to hold a virtual committee meetings. That's not been our nature in the past and we've not held committee meetings, at least since I've been here. But I would imagine that we would continue. If we were to have a committee meeting, we would hold that, not in a virtual sense where you guys would be on Zoom, but I think we would hold it together. There is another policy in here that talks about release time, religious release time, and that's been a big push through our government and legislature. The optional language that we have is to whether or not we want to require the people who we are releasing students to, and it's, it's a little more complicated than just releasing kids, but people who want religious instruction for their kids have a right to come and pick those kids up at a certain time during the day, to take them back for religious instruction and then bring them back to school. Our option in this is whether we want those people who come and pick up the kids and those who they're going to, whether we want them to have background checks. And I think that's important. We ask that of our staff. I would want our kids going to people that we know are safe and that we could trust. There's another permissive language policy related to student expulsion. It adds a wide variety of options to the expulsion process. In my opinion, we have used our expulsion process pretty effectively in the situations that we've had. We had a number the first year. We've not had as many last year and even fewer this year. The expulsion policy adds a variety of options. I would like to stay consistent with our expulsion policy as we've been using it, rather than add those other things in which could cloud it. And the last piece that we have choice for is about administering medications. Talked with our school nurse, recommendation is to go with option one, which is that we can, we can give non, or we can give over the counter medications to kids here at school and as long as we follow our policies and procedures. Many of these other policies, I don't know Kim, if you want to join in on any of these or if, I don't know if the board has any questions about any of the other policies that we have for consideration, but those are the big ones. The rest are many language changes. You change a word here, go from educational to education. And I know those seem insignificant, but it's significant somewhere. So.
Finally, question, would it be possible in the markups that we get where we can see this changes in the options, is it possible that we can make those available for a certain period of time to the public so they can see exactly where those changes that we're considering as opposed to like just change online? Do you get what I'm saying? When we get the markup, the crossouts and the red line?
To share the, to share the policies that are shared with us digitally?
Yeah. Would it be possible just to, for a period of time?
I'm sure that we could probably just post those on our website.
Yeah.
As these are proposed policies or policy is up for consideration.
Because I find it extremely helpful when I'm looking through, I mean, the policy handbook is gigantic.
Yes.
In an online format. But when we get those policy updates, the redlining of where something is changing and, and whether, you know, it makes it a lot easier for us to, for me, I should say, for me to see, is this a word change or is this an actual policy change? And let me determine for myself. And I think that might be helpful, especially in today's climate, for people to see when we're talking policies, what those changes are. So it would be, I think it would be helpful for anybody that is concerned about those to be able to see exactly, when we say it's a minor word change, you can see exactly what is being changed.
Right.
As opposed to document was there and now it's gone.
I can say this, sounds easy. Is that we put, is that we put something on the website that says, this is where you can find our policies that are being considered for change?
Okay.
It sounds easy to me, but I'll, I'll let our technology department decide whether that's easy and I'm giving them things that are going to be a lot harder. But yes, I think that's a good idea and it's, should be no trouble at all. These come out quarterly, our policies come out quarterly unless there's something urgent that comes into play. And we get our recommendations through the Ohio School Board Association. They use their legal team to edit and recommend policies. So that's where all of that comes.
The only comment I would have on the religious release and your requirement of a background check is I would support that in the fact that we require background checks for volunteers.
Right.
To come in and help in the preschool room. So I, I think that's in the best interest of the students. And so I just wanted to, if we require for people coming in the building that we see and have other people with background checks and they leave, we should make sure that they're in good hands.
Yep.
So I'm in support.
Awesome. All right. One thing, the virtual piece, and this just for a point of discussion, we talked a little bit about whether we're going to continue with the virtual meetings here and recording them, but that's an item maybe the board wants to discuss. I know this started being recorded digitally over the pandemic and I know many districts did, but there's been conversation about whether we continue.
It started prior to that.
Prior to the pandemic?
Yeah, it was almost eight years to the dot because when we came in, that was one of the things that, at training for Board 101, that was suggested to be, to be open with folks and to include the community was to stream them. And also at that time, we were looking forward to, to the levy. And one of the main criticisms of the board was transparency not being there. So this was a, a method to make sure that we were more open to the community and more transparent.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'll, I'll own up to it. At the end of last meeting, we had, and prior to that as well, we had had many, an executive session that has run long. The room has vacated by the time we had come out of our executive session. And I value people's time. And so I made kind of an under my breath comment that I think, and I'll stand by it and I still do, I think it's ridiculous that we, even though they are paid, but we have two technology people that have to sit here and wait for us to hash out everything and ruin their evening until 11, sometimes midnight. And probably to segue into a conversation that's coming up, it's only going to get worse as we deal with our budget here in the next couple of years of us staying late. So under the, my breath, I made the comment that we need to do something. So I'm not saying that we eliminate the video, videoing. If, if it's something that people can live with, I'm open to it. But for fairness to Mark and Justin, they, they do a lot. And every time, like with AFF, I, we just had a meeting with the Future Foundation Monday night and I could not tell you how many times their names came up that they help us and I can only imagine who else they're helping. So yes, they're salaried, yes, they're getting paid, but they're not getting paid anything extra and I'm sure they're not getting a lot of extra time off because they just spent five or six hours with us at a board meeting. So that's how it came up. I'm not advocating one way or the other on how to move forward. Just from casual conversations, I think there is some appetite to leave it being streamed. But personally, I would like to respect their time and figure out a way that they don't have to be here all through executive session. That's just my two cents.
I think that's, that would be valuable is to find that alternative, knowing that we have about 100 viewers each, each month on average and we have normally five people in the audience on average.
Say in, in talk.
Being able to reach everybody is valuable, but finding a way so that way we can also release Mark and Justin would be good.
In talking to, yeah, in talking to Mark, the actual viewership during the meeting is closer to seven or eight or nine people. It's when people go back and I know Kim uses it as a tool to go back and to track minutes, things like that. But the actual viewership during the meeting is lower than the numbers that are reflected in the number of times that it's viewed.
I don't know if we're, are we getting into this conversation now? I mean, we're in it.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not making any motion, I'm just wanting to.
Yeah. And I, the thing is, I don't know when we want to bring it, I had a very interesting conversation with a student of mine at OU, who's a community member, recent graduate. And it was interesting, I never would have thought of this. He was talking about how he, at his age, with being a student and everything else, the only, he's trying to learn more about the school district as opposed to being a student, being a community member. And he uses these videos to learn. And I never thought about that generation, that, that, that younger generation where like we're trying to reach community, that's a whole generation that this is where they thrive off of, they live in that on-demand access. And I think it's important, I didn't have that viewpoint before, and we talked about how he's got a, going to have a niece or nephew soon. And it's important to him to keep track of what the district's doing because that niece or nephew hopes to be in Alexander Spartan someday. And so it was a viewpoint where I'm trying to think of like trying to reach the typical general population. I think the younger voter is a great way to reach them. Now whether we have to livestream, that is, I think that's something that we need to consider, like we probably don't need to livestream, but if, I mean, I'm thinking of those selfie buttons that people use where we can hit record, pause.
Finding an easier way to do this.
But I think it's, it was just an interesting viewpoint, perspective that I never took into account that, that, you know, 18 to 25 demographic, essentially Netflix is us.
Yeah.
So just a viewpoint that I wanted to throw out there.
Okay. So is it kind of safe to say we're going to ask Mark and Justin to get their heads together and see if there's any alternatives that we can come up with that would not make you be here until all hours of the night? All right, perfect. We'll wait to hear from you. How's that? We'll leave it with that.
Yep, we'll see if we can find something else.
Okay, perfect.
All right. Awesome. Good discussion. Next up, we'll talk about fees. And one of the things that we had talked about even last year was whether to begin applying fees to different things that are happening within the school. And what we're talking about here is we're talking about participation fees, participation in extracurriculars and participation in our clubs. And these are, these are common in many schools, I believe, there's, it's, it's something that's not abnormal, but it's something that's new for us in Alexander. And I don't know if fees have ever been applied here before.
Prior to the levy.
But prior, prior to the levy, there were fees that were applied? Okay.
And once it passed, we removed them.
Okay. And so this is not revenue that is going to offset our losses, obviously. Losing the levy is $2.1 million out of our budget, but this is a way to recapture some revenue. And we've proposed that we have $75 per sport fee applied for participation. We've got also a $25 per club fee for participation, but we do have maximums that are built in, in that a maximum per athlete will be $150. The maximum per club participant would be $50. We believe that based on our current participation, that would generate roughly $40,000. Now it depends, participation will fluctuate, but we believe that that would generate roughly $40,000 for the district. If there's no comment, we'll go on through. You guys, we'll, we'll go through and we'll talk about that later on in this, but you guys have seen the information, we've shared the information. Another thing, since we're talking about revenue and talking about school, we are currently in a position where we have to do some maintenance. We have to do some things to our, to our district and our facilities that are big. The waterproofing of the building is one that comes up and I think comes up every 10 years? Is that it? Every 10 years, we're faced with having to, to dry our buildings, to seal the brick and the block. And even though we're being very cost-conscious right now, we do have the ability to pay for that. In my opinion, I think we need to go ahead and have this done. Because if we wait, anytime you allow water to intrude, your, your costs are going to go up. So that's a big expense that we have. And Kim, I can't remember exactly the cost that we're, but we have estimates on that.
$220,000 and that includes the ark. It wasn't done, it was just built before, so it'll be its first time sealing it. That was just one estimate that we got.
Sealing the exterior of the brick?
Sealing the exterior of the block of all of our buildings. This building, the ark, all of that, it's done every 10 years. Just keep water infiltration out.
Well, I would challenge any of you to say that we probably, after, our buildings are 20 years old now and I will challenge you to say that they still don't look brand new, that was 20 years ago. So hats off to the, the maintenance staff. It's a sad reality. You have maintenance costs. Do we like to see the price tag of, of them? No. But when you say it's $25,000 a year over 10 years, it's more palatable. So we, we can't sacrifice the buildings and have it falling around us just to save a few bucks.
Oh, I see the risk is greater than the cost. Yeah. We have that and we have some other things that are, that are also on the, we've got to talk about parking lots and all of those things. But those basic maintenance items, we went through with Mr. McCollum this morning and there are things that we can push back, that we included in our first cut of what are potential maintenance in our five-year plan. There are some things that are getting bumped back, but there are others that they, they just need to be done. Changes in staffing, we talked a little bit about money and resources and how things are tight. This year is going to be another big year. Last year, we reduced over $400,000 in spending. This year, we're looking at, at the start of the school year, reducing over $600,000 in spending. Those are big numbers, okay? And we've been, we've been lucky in that we have been able to do this in steps. And over the course of the last three years, we have made significant changes. To give you a quick example of how many changes we have made, when we started in 2022, Kim and I came in, we had 216 employees. When we begin the year in the fall, we're probably going to have 195, maybe less. So we will have reduced our staff by roughly 10%. And that's been over the course of time, it's been about as painless as it can be, but we're going to reach a point where it's going to be more painful, where our changes are going to be more impactful. We've been able to take care of the low hanging fruit and we've been able to make some changes that so far people, not everyone sees, but when you've reduced your staff by a tenth of your total staff, you start to take notice and you start to see that. So just understand the next changes that we make, we're going to be just as thoughtful and we'll try to be just as careful with those. And we'll do them with as much grace and dignity as we can, but we're going to have to at some point pursue revenue. If we're going to maintain being a highly effective and highly efficient school, we're going to have to pursue revenue at some point. That's all I have at the moment. That's enough.
I'll piggyback just a little bit off of what Mr. Hampton said. And we really do, we, we have, I'm going to say two choices, probably multiple, but the two main choices is pursue revenue and that's absolutely uncertain for sure. But at the end of the day, I think the five of us here as your board, we, we take the responsibility of managing the tax dollars to heart. And we are, I'm not going to steal Kim's thunder because the five-year forecast is coming up next month, but we are deficit spending starting next school year a little bit. Year, what, '26, '27 school year? And that's only one year away. That, it, it doesn't look favorable. We'll have more numbers next month, but without revenue, something, the district's going to have, at this point, it's going to be a big change. I can't even speculate what that's going to be, but just know from, from, from an accounting point of view, when, when you give an accountant a deficit number, we, we can hit it to zero, but it's, it's as Mr. Hampton said, there's not going to be much dignity in it when you let an accountant, you give him a number to balance. And I don't want to go there, but that's where we're at. I'm not saying one thing or another about a levy, but we, we don't have many options. We either increase revenue or we cut our expenses to match our revenue. And I could get on a political speech about the state and being flat funded for a decade. And everybody knows our household expenses has not stayed flat for a decade, but no matter what formula the state of Ohio reincarnates or comes up with, Alexander receives no benefit. We, we actually are probably marginally lower in state revenue than we were 10 years ago. So I'll, I'll shut up, but tune in next meeting because Kim's forecast is going to shed a lot of light on where we're at. We're, we're pretty good, as Mr. Hampton said, for this coming school year. There were some changes, there was a lot of discussion with your board on, you know, priorities and what we could live without. And while those discussions were hard, the '26, '27 school year is going to be harder unless something changes. So I, I think we felt as a board, this is now the time that we start at least talking about this. I don't think we have answers at the moment, but just realize the position we're in and some, something's got to change or will change. Thank you. Okay. All right, public participation for agenda items. Anybody? All right, moving on to treasurer's recommendations, as recommended, the Board of Education approve the minutes of the March 12th, 2025 regular meeting.
Still moved.
Seconded.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
And I could get on a political speech about the state and being flat-funded for a decade. And everybody knows our household expenses has not stayed flat for a decade. But no matter what formula the state of Ohio reincarnates or comes up with, Alexander receives no benefit. We, we actually are probably marginally lower in state revenue than we were ten years ago. So I'll, I'll shut up, but tune in next meeting because Kim's forecast is going to shed a lot of light on where we're at. We're, we're, we're pretty good, as Mr. Hampton said, for this coming school year. With, there were some changes. There was a lot of discussion with your board on, you know, priorities and what we could live without. And while those discussions were hard, the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year is going to be harder unless something changes. So I, I think we felt as a board, this is now the time that we start at least talking about this. I don't think we have answers at the moment, but just realize the position we're in and some, something's got to change or will change. Thank you. Okay. All right. Public participation for agenda items. Anybody? All right. Moving on to treasurer's recommendations. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the minutes of the March twelfth, twenty, twenty-five regular meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the financial statements for the month ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Seconded.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the following transfers. And this is our normal monthly school white pool transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the following donations.
So moved.
Seconded.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Under superintendent's recommendations, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the following substitute paraprofessional and teachers as recommended by the Athens Megs E S C Superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
I'll abstain.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the change of classification of Shawna Moore from paraprofessional to cook one effective March thirty-first, twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education grant the following unpaid leaves of absence.
So moved.
Seconded.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education accept the following resignations. Jennifer Ray effective the end of twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and Karen Swart effective March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education accept the retirement resignation of Shawna Costable effective the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So moved.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes, and thank you.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
And I would wish Mrs. Costable a happy retirement, but as you'll see here in a few more lines, we're still holding on to her, just not in a full-time capacity, so we'll still see her around.
Second, thank you.
It's recommended, excuse me, the Board of Education approve or employ the following supplementals for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year pending their meeting all state and local requirements and the constitution of a complete team for the season.
So moved.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education grant one-year contracts to the following pending their meeting all state and local requirements.
So moved.
Seconded.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education grant two-year contracts to the following pending their meeting all state and local requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education grant three-year contracts to the following pending their meeting all state and local requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the following non-teaching contracts pending their meeting all state and local requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the senior class trip to Kings Island, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education grant diplomas to the enclosed list of students pending their meeting all state and local requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
And just quickly to comment, for those who might not know, graduation is Friday night this year. Just for everybody to know, it's just another reminder, we're only about six, seven weeks away.
It is Friday night. Friday, the twenty-third?
I believe so.
Yep.
Seven?
It is.
Seven o'clock.
Twenty-third.
Okay. So if you haven't heard or haven't been notified in some way or the other, if you're hearing it for the first time, graduation this year is Friday night, seven P M., May twenty-third.
Yep.
Okay. Moving on, it's recommended the Board of Education adopt the enclosed extracurricular fee schedule for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So moved. Seconded.
Before we go to vote, I,
Yeah.
on that proposed schedule, is there the maximum for a family on that fee schedule?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a combined, like somebody's in clubs, seven clubs and sports, or is it just separated?
No.
Okay. Just completely independent. Just wanted to make sure. All right, I'm good.
If I, if I could take a second too for Mr. Hampton, you've already explained this to me, but I've had the question a couple of times about why, like marching band, pet band are not on here.
Marching band, choir, those are performance-based courses as well. And if, if they are, if students are receiving grades for activities outside of school, we can't apply a fee to them. So that's why that's not included.
Thank you.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education employ the following supplementals for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year pending their meeting all state and local requirements and the constitution of a complete team for the season.
So moved.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education employ Miranda Smith as Director of Compliance, Curriculum and Assessment for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year at Step Nine on the Administrative Salary Schedule pending her meeting all state and local requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes, and as I told you earlier, welcome home. Assuming you get one more vote. Oh, you got it. She's good. She's got it. I'm sorry. I'm number three. Welcome home.
If not, I'll at least be number four and, and welcome.
Steven?
Everybody else is going to, I suppose. Yes, welcome.
All right, back to Mrs. Costable. It's recommended the Board of Education employ Shawna Costable as Intervention Coordinator and Liaison for seventy-five workdays in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year with a salary of twenty thousand four hundred dollars pending her meeting all state and local requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes, and thank you.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes, and welcome back. Gone for such a long time.
Short-lived.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the following overnight trips.
So moved.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the following.
Do you want to get the addendum ones that go in there?
We can. Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. That, that's board policy. All right.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, moving on.
Good catch.
All three of those.
Yep. All right, moving on to the addendum items that I was overlooking. It is recommended the Board of Education grant three-year contracts to the following pending their meeting all state and local requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education employ Ashley Thaxton as a paraprofessional effective April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five pending her meeting all state and local requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
And finally, under superintendent's recommendations, it's recommended the Board of Education adopt the resolution authorizing the sale of real property.
So moved.
And just, just quickly before we vote. I mean, yeah, I think it, it's worthwhile. And Mr. Hampton, I'm going to turn it over to you because this, this is not anything that we have of value. This, this is something that we've owned apparently for, what, a hundred years?
Hundred years.
And that we had no idea we had.
Yes. The deed actually is eighteen ninety-nine, July fifth, I believe, is when it was dated. And we, we realized we had a small patch of property that was actually within another person's property right off of their front porch. And we didn't realize this until they had a house fire and went to the bank to rebuild. And they discovered through the title searches, property searches, that the school actually owned a small square of land right off of their front porch and in their driveway. So we've talked to them and we were making arrangements with them. We had to draw up a new deed. And so if you want to talk a little bit more about that.
I mean, it's a fraction of an acre.
It's a fraction of an acre. It's like point six, seven tenths of an acre.
And landlocked?
It is right within their property. It would, it would be problematic for them if we did not make this arrangement.
And there's absolutely nothing that we can do with it.
There's nothing that we, there's no value to us.
Right.
No value to the school. It doesn't make our days easier or better. It's not a benefit to our kids in any way.
And I'm sure some historian in the district would know how eventually we came into possession of that in eighteen ninety-nine or whatever it was. But none, none of us know Jerry.
Jerry?
Ms. Ball.
Ms. Ball might know.
She may have written it. So that, that's the resolution for the sale of real property. It, it's not a substantial asset. It, it's something that we cannot use in any way.
Yes.
Good. Okay.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Okay, now to policy updates. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the following policies for inclusion into the Policy and Procedures Manual as recommended by O S B A.
So moved.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
And as Mr. Hampton gave us earlier in his report, this next one, there's a slew of first readings here for the following policies for inclusion to update the Policy and Procedures Manual. There's a lot of it, unfortunately. When you have politicians writing, I always joke, tax code and education code, it's hard to tell what you're going to get, so. But these policies, O S B A is, they're changing them right and left on us, so that, this is the first reading. Did I skip something?
No.
No, we're good. Okay. Business initiated by board members. So we have an amendment that we're going to vote on tonight for Mr. Hampton's contract. It's a small change, but it, it's meaningful to Mr. Hampton. And I feel like I should, we should give a little context, and you guys jump in, please. But when Mr. Hampton was hired, we were actively pursuing a levy. And we put a stipulation in his contract that he reside in the district. Fast forward three years, things have changed. We are willing to release Mr. Hampton from that obligation. Again, just speaking from an accountant's point of view, it's a tremendous, I'll just say it. It's a tremendous waste of money for him to maintain two residences when his situation has changed. And I don't want to have Mr. Hampton speak about his own personal situation, but just suffice it to say, please trust us. There's, there's a good word, trust us, right? That his intent was to live in the district when he signed the contract. But our situation has changed. We're currently, we are not pursuing a levy. And we are in agreement, I think, that we are going to take that away from Mr. Hampton as a requirement. And then secondly, he currently has twenty-five vacation days in his contract. And he's not the only superintendent that does not use his vacation. Our prior superintendent did not use her vacation, and it doesn't mean that if they don't use it, it's not an obligation for us to pay them. But what we're going to do is in this contract, we've amended Mr. Hampton's twenty-five days of vacation down to twelve days of vacation in exchange for a two-step increase on the pay scale. And I feel it's important to say that I went through the calculations myself and made sure that the amount of vacation that he is giving up, it is not costing the district anything in exchange for a two-step increase. It is not costing the district one dollar more than we would be obligated to pay him under the old contract. So that's the two changes that's in his contract that's up for discussion. Digging.
I'd just like to follow up with the, you know, the, when the residence clause was put into the contract to begin with, the idea was anybody who was going to be the superintendent with the levy needed to get to know the district and be a part of the district and know it inside and out. And in the past three years, Mr. Hampton has done every single bit of that to the point where I would almost go to say he knows more people in the district than I do in three years. And hats off to you for your absolute devotion to your job. And you've earned that trust.
Anybody else? Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Steven.
Just before, we're going to get to question. Obviously, people are going to say, oh, he's not living here. He's not going to be here. That's not what that means. He's, he's not going to leave at, at, at three o'clock every day, turn right out here and drive straight to Marietta. He's still going to be involved in the school. He's still going to be at the events. He's still going to be, this is just a living situation. So it's not us letting him out of doing anything with this. He still is going to be around and be devoted to the position in the school, just to clarify that.
Mm-hmm.
You still get your coffee, Jerry. You still get your, only if I get mine.
Yeah, I've always joked with Mr. Hampton. I, I have not heard one person say that they follow him out of the parking lot every day and decide, did he try, turn left out of the parking lot today or turn right out of the parking lot? So we're, we're going to remove that, and yeah, I, you're still going to see Mr. Hampton around. It's, it's just a, it, it just helps him. And I always felt it was kind of, if, if you can't live in the district maintaining two households this close is not cost-effective. So, anybody else? Okay, if not, I'll make a motion to accept the, approve the amended contract as presented.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven? Steven?
Yes.
Thank you. That means a lot.
Board reports. Public participation, non-agenda items. Okay, our next scheduled meetings will be Wednesday, May 14th. And then we're gonna postpone, push back our June meeting for, to June 25th to meet Kim's deadlines and budgeting meeting we have to have. So, May 14th and June 25th. Is everybody good with those dates? Okay. We are not going to have any additional business after our executive session. But I'll make a motion to enter executive session to discuss the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline promotion, demotion or compensation of an employee or official. Or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee or official.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
We need to vote?
You gotta vote.
Vote to go into.
Oh, you made the motion.
Motion second.
Ready to go.
Aaron? Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.